Call the meeting to order, those willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda with the additions of 3.11 Morgan Carson, elementary teacher, Marcella Schmidtke, elementary librarian, and 313 letter of resignation of Daisy, ESL professional.
Second.
Okay, did you get that Deb? Okay, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the agenda with the addition signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Number four, public forum.
None.
None? Okay. Number five, presentation.
None.
None? Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody wishes to pull from the consent agenda or have discussion on? Anything? Okay, hearing none, I would like to recognize the approval of the gifts to the school. Christ the King Lutheran Church of a donation of $200 to the wellness room. Arrow Booster Club donation of $1,679.94 for six golf bags. Arrow Booster Club donation of $4,737 for a ball machine for tennis. Arrow Booster Club donation of $1,268.39 for portable timing system for the track. Arrow Booster Club donation of $2,669 for two pitching machines for softball. Arrow Booster Club donation of $1,324.18 for a sting mat for gymnastics. Arrow Booster Club donation of $170.98 for two equipment bags for junior high golf. And the University of Michigan donation of $500 to the middle school, high school. For grand total of $12,549.49 for the month, of which the Booster Club donated $11,849.49. Then I'd also like to recognize the businesses that donated to Teacher Appreciation Week. We have JBS, Pepsi, First Bank and Trust, First State Bank Southwest, First Farmers and Merchants Bank, Dairy King, Carla's Closet Candy Clothing Boutique, New Horizon Farms, Stone House and Quarry Lounge, Wilson Manufacturing, Sioux Valley Energy, Pipestone Floral, Trivant, Casey's, Michelle Vanderwall, Sassy Cakes, Kerry Goodall, Hank's Foods, Coburns, The Marines, and the Army National Guard. I'd like to thank all the people and the businesses that donated to the district this month. Then I would like to recognize Peggy Reynolds and her resignation for her 13 years of dedication to our district, and Tony Bartman for her six years of dedication to our district. Thank you. So we have first and second, so. I thought we did have a first and second on the consent.
We did it for consent agenda.
For the consent agenda.
Mm-hmm.
You didn't have the first and second?
No.
I thought, oh, okay, I thought I did.
We started writing the first thing.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to number seven, the finals, or financials. 7.1, review elementary building budget year-to-date.
Okay, it hasn't changed much from last month. So we're at $314,591.15 remaining.
Okay. How much is outstanding to come in, do you know Kevin?
The only thing left to come in would be if we have something still. Everything else is taken care of.
All contingencies are paid and, okay?
What's left is, we have furnishings and some different things that we're looking at. Some of the projects, the ball fields and such, we said we would use those funds, so that's kind of where things are winding down. We still have about $105,000 that is still there, so. And we've had the elementary list with some different things. We've kind of gone through and looked at some things that are needed there, so.
So that 105 is after the estimates for the things you said, like the ball fields and stuff.
Right.
And the playground, extra playground equipments out of that too, or no?
Playground's actually out of S.C.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, otherwise no, that would have come out of there also, so.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Any questions? That's a non-action item, we'll move on to 7.1.1, review new elementary building bills. Are there any questions for Jackie on the new elementary building bills? Any questions? Okay, that's non-action. Move on to 7.1.2, approve treasurer's report for elementary building bond.
This is cash balance that's left in the building bond account.
Okay, are there any questions for Jackie? Any questions? Can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the elementary building bond?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor to approve the treasurer's report for the elementary building bond signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.2, review of budget year-to-date. Jackie.
We're currently at 78 percent, last year at this time we're at 76 percent. I'm. This is what it is right now, are there any questions?
Questions? Okay, it's a non-action item. Move on to 7.3, approval of the treasurer's report for April 30, 2022.
This is when I basically do all the bank reconciliations and reconcile the cash to the books. Balance is sitting at 7.7 million as of April 30.
Okay, are there any questions of Jackie? Any questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for April 30 of 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Amy and Chrissy. All those in favor to approve the treasurer's report for April 30 of 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.4, approve regular bills for May. Are there any questions on the bills?
I don't have a question about a specific bill, but what makes the, what's the difference between them being in the regular bills and being in the high school activity bills? Because I see some baseball and things, that kind of stuff's in the general. I mean, what's the, why are they?
What's the difference, the high school activity fund is supposed to be used, the students raise the money and has to be used for students, yeah.
So it's not necessarily paid bills for activities, I got you what you're saying.
Right, so like if, so like if the baseball team wants to go out and have, order pizza, they would use the high school activities fund, but legally you can't use the general fund for that.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So it's funny that they raise.
The board never used to see that, but then they passed a law and said that that, these have to, they have to also be approved by the school board, but that's stupid activity accounts.
Okay, are there any other questions? Any questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the regular bills for May?
So moved.
Second.
Did you get them Deb? Okay, all those in favor to approve the regular bills for May signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.5, approval of high school activity bills for May. Are there any questions on the high school activity bills? Any questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the high school activity bills for May?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor to approve the high school activity bills for May signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to number eight, board forum and information. 8.1, board reports and updates. Anybody from the board have any updates they wish to give?
We met with the city with, for the library again, and we had a really, probably, I've missed one, but I think it was our best meeting yet. They're going to, it sounds like they're going to be taking our proposal to the city council for a vote. And they all seemed pretty positive about the way it's, the way, the way it's written and feel pretty good about taking it to the city council. Wouldn't that be your?
That, and they, they're confident that'll get passed by the MDE as well. In Plum Creek. Those two entities got to approve it.
It was a good meeting.
Good.
Yeah.
And we also, negotiations met with the parents and.
Custodians.
Custodians and.
Secretarial.
Yeah. And that went okay.
Yeah.
Again, June 2030.
Yeah.
We gave them our, our best offer.
Yeah.
So. We'll see where it goes from here on that. Any other, any other committees?
None, since last time.
Okay, it's non-action item. Move on to number nine, administrators' reports. 9.1, superintendent's board report and enrollment report. Kevin?
Well, this is me, so we're, we're, there was no change in enrollment this month, so we kind of ended the year five less than what we started the year, so. Probably a little less fluctuation than in previous years, so that was nice to see. I guess legislative, the legislature kind of wrapped things up yesterday. They had some things in, and I'm not really sure on the status because I hear they didn't quite get everything done or agree to things. But a couple of things that have a significant impact that I'm hoping work out, they, they proposed to change the ag to school tax credit from 70 percent to 85 percent. So that would be even more of equalization for our farmers and those who own homestead ag property, so that, that would be good. And with our bond at the 70 percent level, the state was equalizing about 51 percent of the project, so with another 30, or another 15 percent, it could be upwards of 60 percent of the project could be taken care of through equalization. So that, that's a really good thing for, for our school district. They also had language in there for equalization on things like our other levies. So operating levies, they have tier one and tier two, they had increased those, so that would bring in more, that would be in the property tax relief also, so the state would be chipping in more on things like our operating levy and LTFM and those other types of things that we have, so. And then they also had special education cross subsidy, which is about 500,000, 600,000 for Pipestone area schools. But again, I'm not really sure, I get, I got an email yesterday and they were excited because these things were in there, and then I got an email that said, well, they didn't do much yet. Because they couldn't come to a conclusion by midnight or whatever, or I don't know when their deadline. And the governor said he wouldn't call back the special session, but now they, they may call back the special session to get, I, I'm, I'll learn more tomorrow morning on my MRE eight call, so. And then I just wanted to mention, we have our recognition luncheon on Friday, June 3rd at 11:30. The board, if you can come, we recognize our retirees, so, and have a nice lunch and kind of wrap up the school year with the staff, so.
Friday at what time?
11:30. We're going to do a hog roast with a Hawaiian theme, but we're having a problem finding the chef, something to cook the hog in, and so.
I thought you were talking about the Hawaiian theme, you're having trouble.
No, I think that's fine, it's just, they're, they're probably going to be doing more.
I have a hula skirt you can borrow.
So, I said you may be doing pork in a more traditional way, like loin or something, or.
With pineapple on top?
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get the Hawaiian thing in there, but. I did, I did want to mention that and then make sure the board knows they're invited to come to lunch that day and celebrate the end of the year with us, so. I think that's all I got for now, yeah.
Okay, anybody have questions Kevin? Any questions? We do have principal interviews tomorrow and Wednesday.
Yep, principal interviews tomorrow and Wednesday, so we will be doing that and seeing where we're at by the end of the week.
Where are we doing that, is it here?
Right here, yeah.
Okay.
Group one is in the elementary music room, group two will be in here.
So elementary music rooms are.
Yeah.
So there's, there's two groups of people doing that?
Three, actually, yeah, so, teachers, board members, support staff, administration.
Is there different questions for every group, or there's the same questions?
Little bit different, little bit different for, for every group, and there are some same questions in there too, so, yeah.
So then like the three groups get together and then you guys decide amongst yourselves, or each group?
People write down their opinions and we collect that. Ultimately, the recommendation would come from me, for administrator hire, to the board, so. But people will be able to give their, their input and see where things are at, so.
Okay. Anything else? We'll move on to 9.2, principals' board report. Tony?
Good evening, just a couple of things, we're wrapping up with school. We have our elementary Olympics that will be on May 31st and June 1st. May 31st will be our K1 in the afternoon, and June 1st will be our 2-4 group in the afternoon. Also have lots of field trips going on, and we are getting ready for summer school. And right now we have 99 kiddos signed up for our June session. This is of today. And then 81 for our July session, and that's not including the Edgerton students that will be coming, so. Got a good group of kids. Super excited about it.
All those kids in your area, or is that combined?
That's just elementary.
That's just elementary?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Yep.
How does that compare to previous years, do you know?
Um, we've offered, you know, quite a few every year, but every year it gets more and more and more. Because I think the word spreads how fun it is, because we do make it, you know, more fun and have themes and do games and so.
So Edgerton don't have any sort of summer school program?
This is for our achievement and integration for the math part in July.
Just, okay, so they do have it, okay.
Yep.
Fifth grade Olympics.
They went and did the track. They did field, track and field day with the sixth grade. Yep, yep. Right, right, they, they, they got their track day already, so.
Everybody's got to get sunburned.
I, yeah.
Yeah. Are there any questions for Tony? Questions? Okay, then we'll move on to 9.3, Director of Curriculum, Teaching and Learning's Board Report. Melanie?
Good evening. We wrapped up MCA testing. We are now into the post-test editing phase, which is just me ensuring that every child has a test and the right codes are applied, if they're absent, so on and so forth. Last Wednesday, the staff reviewed preliminary data and completed by grade level, grade level team, a data review summary survey that I was able to collect through Google Forms. The final parent early out communication survey went out last week on Tuesday or Wednesday, depending upon building, and that will close this Wednesday, May 25th. Fast testing is going on for our spring screening. Our last day of that is May 27th. And this year I implemented a check-in each week of the testing season for screening in the spring to ensure that all grade levels complete all screening. So share that with the whole team to ensure everything gets done. And then our third through fifth grade science, teachers have selected the curriculum that will be started to be implemented this coming school year that is aligned to the updated science standards. And then this week I'll start working with the 7 through 12 math to work on some review and some selection of potential new curriculum for 7 through 12 math as well. So that's what we're up to right now.
Any questions for Melanie?
I have a question about the science standard. That's throughout the whole state, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, do you know, are they going to update the MCA test?
So the MCA fours come out the year that the standards are fully implemented. So then that test, they piloted some questions of it last test season for the MCA four in science, and I believe if my memory serves me, it's not next year, but the following year that the science has to be fully implemented, so then the science test would be then, a new updated version.
Because after talking with my eighth grade child, who just took the MCAs, who had physical science this year instead of earth science, most of the questions on the MCA were earth science questions. So there's going to be a test score that's going to be like totally skewed because those eighth grade kids have not had that.
Right, and that's across the state. We were given, we were given opportunity.
I was just letting everyone know that, that if that science score isn't good, that's why.
Right, but every state school district was provided with an implementation process that they could use or not, and we chose to do ours a little bit differently to ensure that by the time the test was there, they would have all the science that they need with the updated standards. So it takes four years or so to get that process all laid out. So. Any other questions?
All the little things that, you know, when you look at test scores, sometimes it's, there's, there's a lot of factors.
Right, chatting with him this weekend, he was just, I'm like, hey, I'm like, how did the ACs actually go? Like, I feel like I haven't talked to you about it, and he's like, oh, he's like, science, he is like, it was all earth science questions. He's like, we don't know, like, he's like, I think I knew some of them, but. I mean, that's hard for, hard for them to, to do that if they haven't had the class.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Anybody else have questions? Questions? Then we will go to Cory. You made it just in time.
Shoot. Oh, good evening. The, the main thing right now is, is our seniors, this is a big week for them. We do the last day tomorrow and have our send-off about 3 o'clock tomorrow. Kind of give them a little rah rah on the way out, so we have that. So they do their baccalaureate Wednesday. We bring back for senior recognition Friday morning, followed by ceremony practice. And then the big deal on, on Sunday, we recognize them and issue the diploma. So that's, in a nutshell, the week. Love to see you Sunday come out and be a part of the commencement program. We appreciate that, if you're able to make it. Yeah, so those are, those are the main things, and the rest of the time is working with the rest of our students to finish their courses and start the, the check-in process of all the things and, and wrap up the school year. So we had a, had a nice day for track and field day, which is kind of always appreciated when the weather cooperates surprisingly, and I thought that went pretty well. So, yeah, a lot of good things going on. Those are the main things to report on, unless you have questions.
So the email I sent to you about parents and kids asking me questions about those credits, has that been relayed to parents and, because I haven't seen anything yet come across? And I just feel like there's a lot of people very confused about
Sure.
how many credits their kids need to graduate, and why all of a sudden it's doubled from what they needed before that. And I feel like there's a lot of kids that are panicking too about it.
And, and I, and I've talked to, talked to several students and explained where we're at with, with credits and how that's progressing. I haven't sent anything specifically out to parents at this point. I've got a meeting with our junior class on Thursday where we're going to go through, we're going to talk about credit status, what credits look like for, for next year, and we're going to talk about our registration and scheduling. Students have already registered, but as you, you may know or not know, our staffing is changing significantly since we did registration. So we're not going to be able for everything that we had initially planned, and there's just changes. So I'm going to explain to students where we're at in that process on Thursday, along with the credit update as well.
Well, I think there's some confusion on what classes are elective credits and what classes are not, because there's some that are elective credits that are being counted as regular credits and vice versa, is what I was told, that, like, I can't remember what the, someone told me, the class, and I can't remember it, they said that there are other classes that is a normal class that everyone has to take, is being counted as an elective on someone's count.
Okay, I guess I'm, I'm not specifically sure about that, but.
I can't remember, I'd have to look at it.
And they want it, they want it listed as the actual class and not an elective credit.
Because you have to have so many elective credits, you have to have so many regular credits. And it's being counted as an elective versus a regular credit, is the way I understood they were saying.
Okay, and I would take a look at that. The main requirements have not changed in the sense of your, your eight credits of language arts, you have seven of social studies and so forth. Those haven't changed, we added a careers requirement. Sorry with this junior class, and they've all been in careers this year. That was the only core requirement change. So in the transition, none of those should have changed.
I was going to say it was a math, I don't have that for sure.
We, we, we did add electives, because that was, that was the bulk of the change when you go from 12 to 14 credits in a year to 16. So naturally, you know, the, the baseline's always been 44. Well, if students pass their six classes on the old system before, they were going to get 48. And we had kids at 56, I think was the, the max, under that. And so with this freshman class and even the sophomore class, their max will be 64. But we know there's, there's things like, you know, in the handbook we say, if you're a senior and you're taking two college in the schools classes here, you can elect to take a, a senior study, basically. So they're not going to get credit for that, so they're not going to have 64. So we, we know those things, and that's, that's true for, for the graduating class now and, and all. So I, I know there's, there's little things along the way, how do we factor in PSEO's courses with this? That's another thing we're really trying to navigate and make sure. You know, and the bottom line is, we're tracking those things, and students aren't going to be denied a diploma based on, on those little things there when we know they've met their core requirements and they've taken the classes that they're supposed to to have a full schedule and according to what we say, and, and get through their four years.
Right.
So it is there, you know, I do have, I did print off, because I was kind of running behind here.
I just think it, we should really communicate that to parents, I mean, because I really do feel like a lot of it was, I had a lot of people worried about, I mean.
Okay, and.
You know, and, and I, and it sounded like a lot of them came to you too, or came in. I know two or three I asked, or talked to, I asked if they'd come and talked to you, and two or three of them had.
I, I had more students talk to me.
And a couple of them, they said their student had.
Yeah, and, and that was good. I met with, I met with those that wanted to, to know, and then I'm working on a, I've been working with a handbook review group of students, and it's mostly juniors, and so I went through it, through it with them. That was a really good process, as they tried to process the, the changes, and. And I know it's, it's not easy, uh, to understand. I go through this stuff, so it, it's probably too easy for me to think through and, and articulate to everybody, so.
Yeah, cause I had the same, you know, Maddie, Maddie, she went from feeling like she was-
Yeah.
-pretty much done and have a pretty skating senior year to feeling like she's gonna have to buckle down and get, get a bunch of credits.
You know, and I know kids look at, at things like that, but if, if they're taking the, the required course load, they're gonna be on track. And, and then it's just looking at, well, is there, uh, a certain case, did, did we count a PSEO credit as, as one when it should be two? Those kinda things. And, and for us to figure that out and, and that's where we have to make sure we're going through the transcripts and talking to, talking to the kids and helping them also look at it. And, uh, there's, I think, a lot of kids who, who do look at it and are concerned.
Hey, are there any other questions? Any? Okay, that's non-action item. Move on to number ten, discussion items, ten point one, cellphone policy.
We included the cellphone guidelines, I believe that you, did you get them with there? That's what is currently in our handbook for Mr. Strasser in the middle school and high school. And they do have different, um, different levels there. Ms. Bartman, I don't think you have cellphones in the elementary?
Not really, no.
But, for the most part, they have to put them away and turn them off.
Yep.
So, elementary doesn't deal with a lot of cellphones. So, it's primarily in the middle school, high school, so. I don't know if you have questions for Mr. Strasser?
I guess I just, I don't think there's a place for them in the classroom. That's my opinion. That's just how I feel. I feel like they cause a lot of problems. And I feel like it's not fair to teachers or staff that they're, if they're getting pictures taken of them. You know, I mean, I've heard that going on of all their kids getting pictures taken of them, fights that are getting broadcasted. I just think, I think all of that stuff is just, it looks bad for our school. It's, it's not the proper way. Use your telephone and I just don't think they should be in the classroom. But that's, that's my opinion.
Problem is, where are they gonna put them?
In their bag, shut off. I mean, to me, just so they're not-
If it's in your purse, in your bag, I mean, it's just too easy to just reach down and grab it and be like, oh, well, they're, I mean, I don't know.
I would, I would build a cubby when you walk into the room and I'd make a building there. I, I, I would, I would get them out of their hands, I mean, I've, like you, I've heard and seen some where if a teacher, I mean, there's been pictures floating around where there could be legal action.
Well, and I just feel like it's part of, I mean, how, are we, are we really teaching them how to use their cellphones? I mean, to me, it's like, you, you don't get to walk, I don't work, walk around my job with my cellphone. You know, so, to me, it shouldn't be a big deal for you during your class period not to have your cellphone on you.
Yeah, I can't bring my cellphone into work.
No, I mean, I can't. I have to leave it on my desk and I check it on my breaks, you know? And I feel like that should be the same for students, I guess, but...
Well, I think if they did not have them, it could calm a lot of situations. It could calm situations because you're not gonna be under the camera all the time and some are gonna thrive on that type of attention.
I, I just, you know, I just know how my, how my kids act at home. I mean, we, we don't let them have them in church for a reason. They're distracting. I don't know.
I mean, I, I totally agree with you, but I'm just gonna be like the devil's advocate right now. And I'm like, you're gonna have some parent come and be like, I told my kid they can have their phone during school. And, I mean, you're, you're gonna have that.
But, but to me, our policy is this. I mean, it's no different than having a kid where a mini skirt to school, our policy is this. Period. I mean, at my job, our policy, and I'm sure we will, I'm sure we will, but does that mean we don't do it?
And then, are we gonna make the teachers enforce it in the classroom? Or who's gonna, I mean, I mean, I get it, I'm just, I'm just talking the devil's advocate because you know, I think these are questions-
I don't know, I, I just feel like some of our discipline problems start there. And I'm not, and I'm not naive to the fact that I think that's all of it. But I do think some of it starts there and I think that if we got them out of the classroom, it would be better for everyone. And it's gonna be growing pains, cause people are probably gonna protest it at first. But if we're good about keeping it, like, this is our expectations, this is what happens if you don't follow them, I, you know, that'll pass too. I mean, it's no different than when it gets implemented at a job. People fight it at first and then after they figure out, you know, this is the rules, this is the way it is.
And, and watching the MSBA's website of their articles around the state, there are more and more districts that are pulling them out of the classrooms.
Is there a reason why we don't have an actual policy about this, that it's just written in the handbook?
I don't know why. We've always had something in the handbook, but not a district level policy, to my knowledge.
I know a few years back, we had more control of it and then it was, well, because they could do certain things on them and we weren't a one-to-one school at the time. And I think it was mainly the scientific calendars, or calculators and stuff that they were using off of them. And a number of the teachers were not wanting to police the issue. They didn't wanna have to do the battle of seeing to it that the phones were-
Yeah, as a teacher, I-
Not accessible.
I would, I don't think I would like that.
Well, I mean, I went to a class, this is just, this is my, one day, I went into a classroom to talk about my career. It was in careers, I was asked to come in and I talked. And the substitute told the students that they were required to put their cellphones away and take their earbuds out of their ears today because they have a guest. And I was like, should that really be something you have to tell a group of eleventh and twelfth graders before they have a person talk to them? I mean, I'm sorry, I was like, I said to my student, I'm like, why, would, would you ever have that in your ear? And she slipped in, she said, why would I ever do that? But, you know, people get their phones out. I'm like, no, you, I'm sorry, that is unacceptable. I mean, someone came out of their day to talk to you, whether it be your teacher or someone from outside the school, and you got earbuds in your ears? I mean, how does, why is that even acceptable? I just don't, I don't get that.
Well, the teenage mind doesn't necessarily, um, think in those terms. And that's part of the, part of the thing. And it, it kinda goes back to, you know, how do we, how do we teach kids how to, um, use their phones and what does that, that look like? Uh, I think the way we, um, the way we have it in the middle school is appropriate. They, they don't get their phones during the day.
Right.
Uh, the high school is, um, you know, says, uh, before school, during lunch, after school, and teachers determine acceptable use. And if we need to tighten up the acceptable use, uh, by teachers, then, uh, if, if that's what you wanna see, then, then that's the approach we'll take. Not having access to phones, you know, it does limit potential issues like, like, like the cyberbullying and picture-taking, which kids don't process that very well either. That's a continual, you know, you can't just go take pictures of adults in the school system. Uh, and you really can't take pictures of others, but, I mean, it's picture, it, you- And there, there are distinct challenges in, in policing, um, the, the use of phones and how good kids are. And you can say, we'll put them on, um, in a shoe thing, uh, on the wall. But if kids say, well, I don't have it on me, and they have it in their backpack and you're teaching, you're not, you're not seeing those things. And, uh, there, there's just a lot of nuances to it, so it's not a, a simple, clear-cut piece. But there, there are things, uh, that we can tighten up as a, as a staff and, um, on my end and, and Ms. Boomcar's end. And, and honestly, I, I haven't addressed it with kids, uh, to the extent that, that it needs to be done. You know, along with just probably some other, uh, general policy approaches, um, this year, you know, versus previous years where we, we've tried to address some things. So, uh, so it starts really there and, and having that communication from the get-go. Uh, going back to that handbook review, uh, group of kids, they didn't really see anything wrong with the policy that, the way it's written in the handbook. They did say that they do use them for academic use in specific classes and in specific areas. So, that was part of their take on, on the cellphones. And, and the more we talked through it, I think they understand, or at least they understood that we need to be better at turning our phones off and having them, um, not using them when we're in a classroom setting. And so, uh, I thought that was a really good discussion, uh, with, with them and, and getting some of their, uh, their viewpoints. So, there, there's some of my thoughts. I'm sure I'll have more, I just got lost track.
So, is, are there electronic devices that we provide not capable of doing what they need? That they're going grabbing their phones?
I, I think sometimes you have certain apps that, uh, a teacher might like to use. Phones are easy and convenient. Sometimes Chromebooks aren't as easy and convenient. And, um, you know, I'm not saying it happens all the time, but I, I do think there are some teachers who like certain apps that work, work well on phones versus a, versus a Chromebook.
Do you think as a whole, or that staff are okay with it, or staff are not okay with it then?
Uh, I would say, um, probably more are not okay with it. That's just a general sense. I also think, um, depends, you can go teacher to teacher to teacher and, and it's not an issue here. Maybe it is here, maybe a little bit there. I, I mean, you can kinda get that sense. I do think, uh, the, the earbuds are a challenge, cause you can't see them hardly anymore. And, and kids walk around, they like to listen to music or whatever it is. And that's, that's just another nuance to the whole electronic device issue.
I guess my initial reaction when I read this, these excerpts from the handbook were that I fear that we're setting our teachers up to fail by not having consistency. That's my only thing. I work at an employer that we have a no-cellphone policy and I know it empowers me to know it's universal and to be able to approach someone and say, can you please put that phone away? Cause I know nobody's supposed to have it. So, I guess that was my initial reaction, was just making sure that whatever approach we take, the teachers feel empowered to make sure that whatever works in their classroom is being supported.
When I feel like sometimes if you, where you're living up to the teachers, teachers that don't want in their classroom almost get, you know, te, students don't like them, cause they're, they're strict, you know, they're, they're not letting us have our cellphones. Well, to me, that kinda sets them up for that too, where, I mean, something that should be taken, I feel should be taken care of, I guess, is, they shouldn't be, the students should be looking like, oh, they're not a cool teacher, or they're not letting us do what we wanna do, or, you know.
Even, even, even having kids in this, in the district, you know, there's, you know, they come home with what happened during the day. You know, I just wanna make sure that, that we have something here that, that, like Amy says, is consistent, but also that does support some of these teachers that do want them out of the students' hands while they're trying to teach. You know, I've had, I've had stories where the student will get, you know, verbally abusive. You know, which, which I can't believe, but, um, when, when, when you try to take it away.
Uh, over, over the years, um, I've probably suspended more kids because of cellphones than, than some other things.
Yep.
And it, it hasn't happened in a while. But that was kind of the point where I'm like, this, this is getting ridiculous, we're fighting over, over a phone. And how do we find a better way? And I don't, I don't know what that better way really-
You know, and, and, and you're gonna have, like, you know, if, if you did tell them to keep it in their bag or not have it, you're gonna have those that break the rule. And, and you're gonna have those that you're gonna have to slap their hands a few times. But if they do get verbally abusive, you know, or storm out, or, or, there, something has to be done.
No tolerance, no tolerance for that.
Has to be done.
So, when, when you look at, uh, at, at the approach we take, um, and, and some of the things that, uh, comments you made, wouldn't you, when kids walk down, uh, when they go to the locker or they walk, uh, in between classes, uh, are you saying that, that needs to be, they don't need to be on their phones? And you'd be listening to music or have the earbuds in?
My biggest problem is in the classroom.
Yeah, for me personally, it's in the classroom. It, it's when the teacher is trying to, is trying to have control of the class and trying to, trying to have everybody's attention, that there should be no distractions, there should be. If, if, if the final five minutes and, and they're, and they're basically done and, and coasting, and if they wanna, allow them. I, I mean, that's maybe, but, but again, maybe not. You know, but, but hallways and stuff, that would be about impossible. But I think in the classroom with the twenty-some kids, I think it should be able to be enforceable.
I never had, I never had a cellphone in school when I was, I mean, I don't even know if, well, we probably-
You were passing-
We probably wrote notes in my bed.
You were passing notes, Chrissy.
We were passing notes. So, I mean, it's just, yeah.
Well, and if, if they've got earbuds in, they're not going to be paying attention to anything going on in classroom.
No.
Well, I just think it's, isn't our job, our job as a school is to teach them respect too, I mean-
A few weeks back, Maddie got a treat because she was the only kid that didn't use her phone during class. So, the teacher gave her Starburst to reward her.
I think it's just a respect, a respect thing though, cause like, Cory, if you're giving your principal a report to us and we're all sitting here on our phones, you know, like, that's just such a disrespect to not engage and listen and make eye contact. And I think that's the root of it, isn't-
I agree, I agree. It's a, it's a respect thing for me too, that, that's the biggest thing.
And it, and it's kind of a thing that's, that's really coming around societally when you look at, just the, uh, everybody's got a phone. And over the last ten years with the capabilities, uh, fifteen years from like the onset of the iPhone and the, the capabilities that come with them, and how do we, how do we really, uh, utilize, uh, phones for good purposes? And, um, and then kinda now bring it back to, now let's, let's work on leaving it somewhere else. But, um, as, as much as, as some of our students are on, I mean, it's, like, if, if my phone's there, how do I not check it? If my phone's on the wall, how do I not find a way to go over and, and look at it? The, so, so I sometimes worry that, um, and, and I've read some articles, um, about that is also a distraction, not knowing where my, my phone is. And so, it's like, how do you rewire some of those pieces with, with our young, young people? And, you, there's a lot of teaching and, and I don't really know the best way to teach them about how to use a cellphone. Right. And, you know, in a school setting and, you know, other than, hey, this is a policy, it's how we're doing it and this is what we expect. But to carry that out day by day is, you know.
I think we can applaud our students that because MCA testing has very strict rules about having a cellphone and even like they cannot have their smartwatches either, I didn't have one issue that, because if they are caught with it, then I have to invalidate their test. And our teachers are like, no, this is how it goes. So, you walk into any of the testing rooms and if they have a counter on the front table, so that they're all there, everything's all lined up, they're all off, and that's the protocol that every teacher has to read because it's a standardized assessment throughout the state. So, I mean, our kids can function without their phones.
Oh, yeah, they can. It gets a little hairy for us though, cause-
It does.
It's a good disciplinary thing at my house. Things change real fast when they lose their phone.
Yeah, I guess my biggest thing coming out of today is just knowing that if we keep it the way it is, that teachers know that they're supported and empowered to take a stance in, in their classroom if that's what's gonna be conducive to the way they teach and the subject that's taught.
You know, and, uh, another thought is, is teaching parents how to, uh, because the, the convenience of phones, uh, you, you'd be amazed at how many times it's the parent contacting the student or, they're walking down, down the hall on the phone and I'm like, what are you doing? And, you know, like, put, uh, hang it up, put it away. It's, well, my mom called and they wanna, like, okay. So, that, that convenience factor then, uh, plays into a little bit of this. And we get used to things and having that instantaneous, um, communication, whether good, bad, or indifferent, uh, just another piece to the whole thing.
But they do store text messages and they do store voicemails.
They do.
But that's the number one contact when I say something, it's my mom.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Number one.
I can believe it.
I can believe that.
I'm sure it is. But is it really their mom?
Well, that's a good question too.
It's easy to say it's my mom. It's easy to say it's my mom and then, I don't know, I just.
So maybe there's education opportunity with the parents too, you know?
Well, and I just think it's something when school starts, it should be relayed and, I mean, whatever our expectations are and, I mean, I don't know, I just, I don't think they should be in the classroom. That's just my.
They still have office cadets, the parents can call to school. I used to be like office cadet.
You bring a note?
Yeah, bring a note to the teacher and.
But it's super, I mean, yeah, I.
I mean, I don't know.
I, you know, it's a school, I don't know. I have not, not gotten the message to my kid yet, so.
You know, in some of our communication, I mean, I've, I've sent messages through the app and then, and through the app has a text option to our students too. I, I've tried to do more scheduling those for like lunchtime and distributing it at that point, but.
But the other thing too is if we're just talking classroom, there's a lot of time during the day between class, lunch. I mean, it's not like there's no opportunity to take a look at it.
Right. If mom does text, she can answer.
We're only talking a block, a, a block of time where there's supposed to be a sponge and, and learning what the teacher's trying to teach.
Anything else?
No, but I'm willing to bet I'll get an earful from those in attendance.
Okay. Then, then we'll move on to ten point two.
What's gonna be our action?
Uh, I would say.
So it doesn't just.
Right.
Go by the wayside, we talk about it and nothing happens?
Well, we've got two things here for discussion items, the cellphone policy and Brown Hill proceed, proceeds. I think we'll do our discussion again on the, on these proceeds. I think we should schedule a work session for full board discussion on the two of them and come to a conclusion of what we want to see happen.
Okay, I agree with that.
Do that.
On both items, no?
Yeah, since we can put them together on the same, same timeframe and we want to do it, like the Brown Hill proceeds, if we're gonna utilize it for any of the, the playground equipment, we're probably gonna have to work, schedule that one fairly quick so that if it has to go into the bidding process that we get that in there, but we'll do the.
I thought that was already taken care of.
It depends on what our, we've got options that we can do that we want the discussion and I think the full board needs to have. When it comes to the proceeds, the full board needs to be involved in that, not just to select a few of the board. So we want the full board to, to be involved.
I didn't select who was here tonight, so I guess.
I, I get that, I get that.
I mean.
But these are, these are just discussion items tonight anyway. We couldn't make a decision.
Okay, great.
So we're gonna have to have a set time when we're gonna sit down and discuss them if it needs to go in deeper in depth and then make a decision. And then we can give our thoughts to Kevin, who you want available for discussion on, like the cellphone policy that we can question. You know, if you've got certain teachers you want to have brought in, we can try and bring them in. We've got our administrators and that's what we probably will do. Okay, so then number ten point two, Brown Hill Proceeds Survey Review.
Last, last month you wanted to know, just solicit some feedback on kind of where things were at. We had about two hundred and fifty responses, so, you know, appreciate that. About forty, forty percent probably came from within the district, so staff and students. The rest were from the public, so about a hundred and twenty-five. So you get a sense of where things are at and it's kind of all over the board with different things. The other idea was, is did they have any other suggestions for you? And the number one thing that kind of came up was an upgrade in the elementary playground and you heard a lot about the wood chips and maybe looking at a different type of surface. There's the rubber, a couple of different options. They referenced other schools that have playground type things. And then also there was reference to other school, elementary needs. And I know Ms. Bartman had worked with the leadership team, collected a list. We've been kind of working through that. You have to remember, we, we solicited a lot of input on the elementary school from the staff and we did say no to, I mean, we, we had to try to come up with a consistent elementary and we weren't gonna give every classroom, I mean, otherwise we'd have forty different designs, so you can't do that. So you're also getting some of the, what we said no to the first time is coming back again. But there are some really good ideas that we're just moving forward with and have been kind of putting in place some things over windows, some others, I forget exactly, there was.
Some of the protective stuff on the walls.
So, I mean, those are things that are there. But the playground, I, I just wanted to, I don't know if you've seen, they've talked about this rubber surface, poured rubber is what is in Wyndham and Laverne. We have wood chips right now and just so you understand, the wood chips is five thousand dollars. If you go with the rubber tire chunks, whatever that, that's about twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars. And then if you go with a poured rubber surface like this, that's about eighty thousand. So that, that's the difference. And again, that's where they're saying if you're gonna use some of the proceeds, you can do that. Now, we also are taking the playground out of Esser. So you could take and put these poured surfaces in out of Esser and not use these others. So it might be an option to think about.
I've seen them in Laverne and they're.
So nice.
Pretty cool.
Very nice.
That's the longevity of one like this.
Well, there is the poured surface.
Oh, yeah. It's, and, and it's, it's like, it's like super.
I'm not sure, they, they, I don't know how long they've been around, but I, I just said, he said they're really nice and they're, they're the best, so they must hold up pretty well.
I know when I've been there for a track meet, I'll go for a walk, just walk around the school, waiting for my child to have another event, like free time. And there's two or three playgrounds around that complex and they all have that surface now and it's, it's really neat.
So are you saying that there's an option to have like a loose one and then one that presses it together, is that what you're saying?
There's, what we currently have is the synthetic wood chips or whatever they are. And you can also get that in a rubber, like rubber chunks.
Yeah.
And then you can get this, which is a poured rubber.
Got it.
That, that's the, and then there's just price differences with, with each of them.
So is it a safety, is it a safety issue difference or is it a, just a tracking in of stuff difference or what? I mean, like, I know it looks cool, but why or what, what is the advantages of having it?
I think there's much difference in the safety so much as there was the mess that.
Okay, so the tracking in and stuff.
Like it gets caught in coats, like I don't, my kids bring their coats on and get stuck in them.
It's like splinters in their, you know, sweatpants or whatever.
I've heard feedback of it's in clothes and.
It gets stuck.
Yeah, I've seen it in clothes. That's why I was wondering if it was just the.
And when you walk on it, when you walk on it, it feels a lot like walking on the track.
Yeah.
The, if you think back to playgrounds, you, you've seen the P rock, you can't use that anymore. It's a safety issue and then there's also handicap accessibility issues with the P rock where the others, you don't have the accessibility and they, they say they have as much safety form. There's a, something underneath this, so it's evidently pretty, pretty cushiony type thing and porous so the water goes through. So that, that's kind of the difference. And I think it's, the complaints are is it's going home in clothes and that's the biggest problem. I don't think for us, it's, it's cheap, it's easy to maintain, five years, you throw some more chips down and, you know, but people's washers probably don't like, like the stuff, so. And I did talk to the salesperson, I mean, we could make a change on the current one we're gonna put in this summer. I wouldn't wait for a month here, but I think if we kind of wanted to do something like that, there is a change in excavation. I think they have to dig out a foot for the wood and the rubber, but for this, they only have to do like seven inches or something like that. So it's a little bit different excavation, but probably not a big deal. And if we wanted to look at doing the other playgrounds into this type of surface, probably would be worthwhile to see what he, what he'd say. Dollar value. I talked to both super tense, Wyndham and Laverne and they just said, greatest stuff ever. So very, very, but it's expensive, so.
It's gotta last a while though, I mean, it has to, it has to last.
I think that we should ask what the life expectancy is of it.
I guess remember with me is also.
There's, there's less routine maintenance on this type of thing, so it's, it's probably that way it is. I just, yeah, it's interesting to know how they hold up in Minnesota where you have a hundred degrees in the summer and forty below in the winter.
Cause I'm assuming Laverne, I mean, they just put them in, right?
Yeah, they're both brand new, yeah, they are brand new, so I, you know, you could check, but my guess is that it's definitely, well, there's maintenance on anything.
Right, right.
I think you should check into it if you can, especially if you use Esser phones, I mean.
A quick Google search shows ten to, or twelve to fifteen years. I don't know how accurate that is, but.
Longevity, high. Plate value, high. Maintenance, you know, pretty lower.
Is it, is it low?
Price, high. So longevity, high, price, high. It's like anything, I think. And you want to talk about something that's used every day, would it be safe to say?
Yeah.
Every.
Every day, all day.
Every day, yeah. So, I mean, heavily used.
Yeah.
I mean, when you talk about an elementary playground, it's just, and I know we had to put in that mulch and that stuff, I mean, you just, you're having to do that every year. Playground equipment needs to be maintained, so probably one of those things. And when you find out we can use our Esser dollars, it's probably not a bad way to go and just, just use it that way, so. And then I also wanted to just say that, you know, you can see the suggestion of an employee daycare came up. They talked about music and art program improvements, a few people brought that. Employee compensation and gymnastics facility upgrades are a couple there, so. Those were just some of the comments and ideas that were different, so that was kind of what you wanted to hear a little bit about. I did add, you, you had a lot of people suggest, you know, almost half suggest apply to current debt. The current tennis court interest rate is three point one five percent and the current bond on the elementary school is two point five one percent. Current rate is three point nine nine and I was told it'll be at five in the near future. So if you do any type of projects, you've got pretty cheap money right now on the, on the bonds that we do have, so financial advisors would advise you to put the money in a capital account for ten years and use it towards other things than paying off low interest loans that were already, I mean, that's, that's just, that's what they told me, so. That's your information and kind of where things are at, I don't know if that helps you, but I think that that work session, we, we need to kind of get down to nitty gritty on some of this and.
Come out with a decision.
And if you want to put it in a capital account for a roof for ten years, you could do that and then if you change your mind or something comes up, but we just gotta get it into a dedicated capital account, then if you change your mind later to do that. So you don't have to spend this or do decide a project, but you do need to make that decision that way, so. And then there's a couple of other things that might be a good idea, so. I don't know if you had any other questions on that or?
Any other questions? Any questions? Done? Okay. Non-action, move on to number eleven, Board Action, eleven point one, Retirement Letter From Rick Wahlberg Custodian. And he's been with the district.
Passed it.
Twenty-five years, correct? Yep. I'd like to thank him for his time for the district. Are there any discussion on Rick Wahlberg retirement? Any discussion?
He was at the elementaries for quite a few years.
He started in Jasper.
Jasper, okay.
He was down there.
So he's helped out, a lot of. Stuff, cleaned up a lot of stuff.
That he has, that he has.
And always pretty positive and.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, good guy, good guy and we wish him best in retirement.
Yep. So can I have a motion to accept the retirement letter from Rick Wahlberg Custodian?
Some, second.
Katie and Amy. All those in favor of acceptance of the retirement letter from Rick Wahlberg Custodian signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eleven point two, Approval Of The Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty Three Resolution For Membership In The Minnesota State High School League.
We do this annually and for activities that are high school league sanctioned, so.
So where are they at with their contributions that they were?
They have put to, they put together a finance committee and they put in a alternate, a different schedule and they're transitioning it to basically what we had suggested based on enrollment and those types of things. So they've been working towards getting that in place, but they're transitioning it in over three, three or four years, I believe, probably. So it'll, there'll be some, but the fees will gradually change into.
Okay, at least they're heading in the right direction.
And I don't know if they're in the, you know, that assessment they gave, I, I think, you know, they've been able to have their state tournaments this year, so their, the revenues are coming in and they're, they're not relying on us to have to say bail them out on some of that stuff, so.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Any other questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty Three Resolution For Membership In The Minnesota State High School League?
Some of.
Second.
Chrissy and Brad. All those in favor to approve the Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty Three Resolution For Membership In The Minnesota State High School League signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eleven point three, Approved Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty Three Contracts With Southwest West Central Service Co-op. Kevin?
We had one change and that was with cybersecurity services. They are able to enhance their cybersecurity for our school district. I don't, Josh, they really get excited when I ask questions and then they just go off and I can't understand exactly, but, you know, our internet comes through the service co-op, they filter, they monitor, I mean, they were seeing traffic coming out of Russia, you know, when the Ukraine thing started because they were trying to, so they, they just shut things off and they can control things. We also have insurance for cyber attacks. This is different, this actually, I, I made sure Kozlowski know that we did this, so I'm hoping that that will help with, you know, the insurance premium that we pay on the cybersecurity type thing, but that was an added feature that they put in and I think there's a lot of talk with cybersecurity in schools and where things are at, so this is what you're seeing, so that was what the change, major change was.
Did I dollar mount on that?
Yeah, I see the two was three. Showed zero.
I thought it was sixteen dollars an hour.
That's not free.
I think, I think this is, they didn't update this.
I would say exciting that too.
Is that the last one?
Zero dollars.
Is that not the current?
I'm not saying we didn't update it, maybe the co-op didn't update it, but it does cost us something and it says zero on here. That's all.
I'm gonna tell you who sent it to me. He ain't here. I'm going to tell you who sent it to me. He ain't here. All right.
Cause I saw that you guys had a dollar.
So if he sent it and we approve it.
I thought it was like twenty-eight hundred or something.
Is it down in the?
No, no. I, I could find the email.
Cybersecurity, here it is right here. It's inspired, I'm sure.
Much easier to cyber security.
It's like on page, we keep scrolling underneath that.
There's one on there?
Yeah, there's a rate, a comprehensive five-year rate. SWWC member, the base rate is seven thousand one hundred and fifty and it's twelve dollars and seventy-five cents per student.
That's.
So the base rate is that and then you take your students and.
Twenty-three thousand dollars. Twenty-four thousand dollars. Twelve dollars a student.
Twelve seventy-five a student.
I gotta find.
Twelve thousand.
Next on this one, comprehensive cybersecurity is zero.
Yeah, that was what our original contract, then we had the addendum contract. Is this the addendum contract?
This is the very first page. I was so in love with this game on the computer.
And this is that, so that's the thing we need above and beyond what we have here now in place.
They're offering that extra.
Base rate.
But do we need it?
So you get a base rate plus twelve thirty-five percent, is that what we're doing?
It's the, where we're going. I did talk with Kozlowski about it also.
See prior year home, see if they can give us.
They have, they have a different insurance. This is actual.
And it's a five-year contractual term.
Wow, they should make it a little more confusing so we can all understand. It'd be nicely put on the front of the contract so we know what we're paying is unless somebody wants to decipher that. I'm just going to follow me. Who?
I would, I would, I would. I assume that this is, I would, I would just let it sit for a month and we'll bring it back next month.
Okay, table it?
Yep. I, it was, it was.
I'd do something my budget.
It's twelve seventy-five a student. I mean, it's, it's seventeen thousand dollars, maybe twenty, nineteen thousand dollars. Somewhere in there.
I make a motion to table the Southwest Central Service Cooperative Contract.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to table the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Contract with Southwest West Central Co-op signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Eleven point four, Approval of Summer School Recommendations.
We have all of our staff for summer school on the list, so.
Okay.
This is just approving the work agreements for, for all those staff.
Are there any questions? Any questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the summer school recommendations?
So moved. Second.
Katie and Amy. All those in favor to approve the summer school recommendation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Meeting adjourned.